I call the November 6, 2023, regular meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Richard Helms for the invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We come today together to seek your guidance and make decisions for us tonight. Be with us in our deliberations and give us guidance to do what is best for our county. Please give the wisdom to lead with integrity and decisions that may affect what is right for all involved. This week is Veterans Day. Let us give the respect to our veterans past and present. It was you and the veterans that have allowed us to live in this safely in our country. Please give special protection to our police, firemen, EMS, and essential lives to ensure our safety. Finally, dear Lord, please grant us the humility to always seek your will and all that we do in so. With our name in prayer. Now, if I cheer, I'd like to ask that I've been giving a prayer. It's like Saturday is Veterans Day. How many veterans do we have here? Thank you, sir. But I'd like, I came across this and getting ready for Saturday. And I think it's very appropriate that we hear this prayer for our veterans and our county. Heavenly Father, thank you for the American heroes that have served our country so faithfully. We honor our veterans for their sacrifice to our country and for their courage and integrity. Many citizens realize that our country is better and safer because of their valued duty. Please pray you, praise you for all veterans who have gone before in the eternal rest. But we especially pray for those veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice while defending our country. Bless their families and come to them with the thankful prayers of a grateful nation. Almighty God, you gave us your own son, Jesus, to allow him to follow an example to work to create more loving world. Let us not perpetuate war, but safeguard peace and preserve your gifts of equality and freedom. Could the efforts of our veterans help us continue to promote justice in all nations? We thank you for our veterans past and present and for the knowledge that you are with us in all times. Amen.
Would you like to lead us in prayer tonight, Commissioner Helms? The junior ROTC is not here, has not arrived. Would you like to lead us in the pledge? Yeah.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Helms, would you like to move forward with the swearing in or?
I'd like to ask that we take off the agenda, the item to select the chairs tonight, and we'll delay that to a future meeting.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the oath of office ceremony for Commissioner J.R. Raul. Mr. Raul was appointed to the Board of Commissioners on October 18th by the Clerk of Superior Court, Ms. Wendy Maynard. Mr. Raul, will you please come forward for administration of the oath of office?
You, J.R. Raul, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner for the County of Union, of the God.
I do.
You, J.R. Raul, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and merciful allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities of the God.
I do.
You, J.R. Raul, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of Commissioner for the County of Union according to the best of your skill and ability according to laws of the God.
I do.
The next item on our agenda is item 23-767 regarding election of officer. This item was added to the agenda, but it has been removed from the agenda. So let's move that one forward. That brings us to speakers. For informal comments, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for informal comments?
Yes, ma'am. There are three people who signed ahead of time on the line, and also one person has signed up at the meeting.
Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone will sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meeting, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal tax will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Our first speaker tonight is Kimberly Morrison Hansley.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Morrison Hansley, and I reside in unincorporated Union County. Congratulations, Mr. Raul.
Thank you.
I have left with all the county commissioners a copy of this packet here for you to review. And just to walk you through it, if you take a close look at the top of the house, you may not know what it is, but it's buzzards. It's buzzards that line the house because I have years after year after year approached members of the board and the county manager, current and previously, about adopting or adhering to the minimum housing standard in Union County. This is buzzards from a neighbor's house who has left the house abandoned. And the feedback that I have been given is that the county is not in the business of condemning houses. But you guys can probably have already had the record, but it is of record that you do condemn houses when it fits your needs. And I think you have some language in here in the meeting tonight that you will be condemning a house, properties, if the property owners would not agree to whatever you're asking. Also, my other issue, and I will leave this packet. This is the beginning of my conversations when my children were in school, with county staff, with county commissioners, anybody, everybody that would listen, about the residents in the area where I live that do not have adequate internet. There are billions of dollars available for internet. Less than $40,000 would bring internet to all of the residents that live in the area where I live. It will be coming before this board very soon, specifically information regarding grants that will help with the internet infrastructure. Our area isn't served, but it is underserved. When my children were in school, we had two hotspots to try to get homework done. I've been, before COVID, actually reached out when previous county managers were here, and Patrick Nollin was one of the people that was supposed to help us on this. I have yet to hear from him to this day. Out of all the people I've talked to, the people that were supposed to help me never reached out. So I want to leave this. This is information about all the people we've contacted, how much it would cost, what, Mark Brody, Mr. Willis, anything, any conversations about it are in here, from Spectrum, Frontier Studies, Speed Studies, everything that I have tried. I pay my taxes. I would like for something to be done about this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brittany Bolden.
Good evening. I apologize. I have laryngitis. I'm going to do the best I can. Congratulations, Commissioner Raul. We, the people of the United States, in order to perform a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America. It was not by chance that our Constitution begins with "we, the people." The founders wanted everyone to understand that the government only has the limited power it does because the people give it those powers. In fact, all throughout the creation of our founding documents, you can find "we, the people" at the forefront. In the Declaration of Independence, "we, the people" are there. It establishes that all humans are created equal and are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, especially life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It goes on to explain that the very purpose of government is to protect the rights of the people. In the Constitution, "we, the people" are there. Knowing throughout history consolidated power was used to crush the people, the founders went to great lengths to guard against it with the separation and balance of power in our government. In the Bill of Rights, "we, the people" are there. Some members of the Constitutional Convention originally argued that the Bill of Rights was unnecessary because the doctrine of enumerated powers only allowed the federal government the powers that are specifically named in the Constitution. Others were not willing to leave this to chance or interpretation and insisted on listing the rights of the people creating our Bill of Rights. In our type of government, "we, the people" are there. The founders chose a representative-style government because they knew that for America to succeed, the people needed to have a voice at the table safeguarding against tyranny. In the requirement for elected officials to take an oath of office, "we, the people" are there. Every elected official takes an oath to swear their allegiance to the Constitution and to support and defend it. This oath reminds them that they are a public servant who serves the people. Sadly, we have come to a time where many elected officials have forgotten that they are servants of the people, when on the campaign trail they assure us with promising words that once in office are followed by unrecognizable actions. We are tired of voting for a representative at the polls and getting a ruler once they sit in the chair. Of course, there are exceptions, and those elected officials are wildly popular with the people and for good reason. They are doing their job as the founders intended. We live in an amazing country. We don't want to lose it. We do not have time to get this wrong. We have to return to the way it was designed to run with the people at the forefront. Not government, not special interests, not Big Pharma, not big tech, but we, the people. Thank you.
The next speaker is Archie Hansley.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Mr. Raul, on your appointment. I, Archie Hansley, live in unincorporated Union County. And just back to speak to you again, I stood before you a month ago at the meeting in reference to the current county facility use policy. And at that time, I understand that there were actually only four commissioners installed at that particular time, where now we have five. We have five. And would just like to ask that you would consider the comments that were actually made and also the concerns of taxpayers and citizens here in Union County who do not have the right to use public facilities that they're actually paying for with tax dollars unless they fit a certain sector of actual interests that have actually been set forth by county government. So with that, I'm just going to leave you. Now that we have five, excuse me. I would hope that this would be placed on your agenda in the very, very near future so we can actually have this returned back over to the actual taxpayers, who are the people of Union County. Thank you.
Mr. Edwin Ehlum.
Edwin Ehlum, Town of Waxall, to the commissioners, to Ms. West, to the county manager, to all of the staff, and especially Ms. Lynn West. On November the 2nd, 2023, at approximately 8:00, I, Edwin Ehlum, a citizen and taxpayer of Union County, went to what I thought was a public debate at Kensington Elementary School in the town of Waxall, North Carolina, for the November 7th election, which we were told was a private event held in the Union County public school facility that I, as a taxpayer, and a lot of taxes we pay, and the bond referendums that we pay for, was asked to leave this public facility where the organizers were Millbridge HOA, where three elected town officials were present and three challengers present, and maybe a quorum was even present. The public debate that was going on actually concerned me because, being asked to leave, it was mainly because it was put on by the red wall. Here is the question. Are Millbridge Town of Waxall residents and HOA gang more important and more special than all the citizens of the Town of Waxall and in Union County? The Union County Board of Commissioners oversees the policies and actions against all citizens and subsidiaries, as two or three people have already said, and we were not communicating about that. Or is Union County Board of Commissioners are going to allow this organization and these individuals to wag the dog's tail? Break laws. My voice in the upcoming Union County election that I pay for was not heard, and it was tremendously lacking, equal opportunity and equal access to those facilities that we all pay for. Now, if Millbridge wants to have a private meeting, then they need to pay $2,000 or $3,000 at some place where they can actually meet, where they can actually maintain that. But to hold a private meeting in a public facility that they paid $206 for, do not let the people subsidize this hate that is being spewed throughout this county by this mess that we are all witnessing. We're asking you, as this board, to look into it. I've left you a packet that gives you an outline of what the person and who the person was that actually solicited this event and signed for it. I also left you the contract in which the school board has for this to take place. And it says on number eight of this particular contract, it says that groups, again, for those persons who spoke before us, and I think the lady who talked about the Constitution was quite on track. It says, "Groups and individuals that use school facilities must comply with all federal, state, and local laws and any additional rules required by the board superintendent and or his designated." We need honor, integrity. These men that you say who have fought.
Thank you, Mr. Ehlum.
They fought for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do believe this was a homeowners' association meeting. I wasn't aware of this, so I'm not sure.
Just investigate it, Ms. Chairman.
Miss who?
You're the vice chairman.
Oh.
So just investigate it.
Okay.
It was out of order.
So we were informed today that there was quite a scene, and the mayor asked you to leave, is what we were told.
No, I checked with the mayor before I left because he was the only authority there that I recognized. But the people who actually were steering the hate, they thought I had walked into a Ku Klux Klan meeting. That was the hate and vitriol for the place that we pay for, and we should not allow these kinds of individuals to hoodwink the community by not telling the truth, that it was a political event that they should not have hijacked from all the people being there in the public debate. It was fraudulent.
And it very well could be. But this board has no jurisdiction over the homeowners' association of Millbridge. That was their meeting, and they clearly stated you had to live in Millbridge to attend that meeting.
You're the red wall, simply trying to make this work. It needs to be investigated by everyone. And let's not keep taking up for these individuals who have just run the policies amok in this county.
Try not to cause this thing next time. The mayor asked you to leave.
I walked out on my own freedom, and the police knew better than to put their hands on me because I was right.
Are there any other speakers who have not signed up to speak who wish to speak? Hearing none, we will now move to our next item on the agenda. The next item is a public hearing for SXCW Properties 2 LLC, Project Bear, to consider a Step 2 Economic Development Incentive Grant. I will now open the public hearing and recognize Chris Platte from the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission for comments.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chairman. I'm going to have Ms. Rachel Holsman, who's handled this entire project, present for you.
Welcome, Commissioner Raul, and thank you to Vice Chair Merrill, Commissioners, and Mayor Matthews for hearing us today. I'm very excited to bring before you this evening an economic development incentive grant request by SXCW Properties 2 LLC, commonly known as Sam's Express Car Wash, and previously under the codename of Project Bear. Our office began discussions with SXCW Properties 2 LLC in January of this year. The company is The company is considering investing $9 million. This includes land, buildings, and equipment. The site under consideration is tract L1 in the Monroe Corporate Center, where the company could construct a 50,000-square-foot building to house its corporate headquarters and distribution operations. The company is currently headquartered in Matthews, North Carolina, and has been operating premium car wash locations in the Carolinas and Virginia since December of 2012. They currently employ more than 20 people per car wash location, providing amazing customer service and car washing experiences. If Union County is selected, the company commits to hiring at least 10 new jobs, but anticipates 75 employees at its new facility. They will invest a minimum of $3 million, but will but plan to invest $9 million. And finally, this is a competitive situation between Union County and another location in South Carolina. As part of the company's due diligence, they have indicated that incentives are a very important factor for this project's ultimate location decision, and any other final decision will not incur until after the public hearing today by Union County. Tonight, we are requesting your consideration of a Step 2 Economic Development Incentive Grant in an amount not to exceed $171,000, paid over five years, based upon the Union County Tax Office's appraised value each year on the company's anticipated investment of $9 million in land, building, and equipment. Based on this investment and holding all factors constant, including the depreciation, the company would pay an estimated ad valorem tax on the new taxable investment of $264,600 over the grant period. When we factor in depreciation, the incentive grant changes slightly to $170,392 over five years, and the ad valorem tax revenue adjusts to $263,659. Actual tax revenue to Union County will be based on the current tax rate applied to the assessed value of the investment each year after depreciation. The project has a cost-benefit analysis ratio of 1.72 to 1 over the first five years of the project, which is the grant period, and 4.96 to 1 ratio over the life of the project. We also presented this project to Monroe City Council on October 18th, 2023, at their special meeting, where a similar economic development grant was awarded. Therefore, the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission staff recommend the award of this Step 2 Performance-Based Economic Development Incentive Grant to SXCW Properties 2 LLC in an amount not to exceed $171,000 to help secure this $9 million investment. At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Anthony Warren, who's available to answer any questions that you may have about this project. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Anthony Warren. I'm the Director of Business Development for Sam's Express Car Wash. You know, I'm looking forward to this project in the Monroe area. We already have a location in Indian Trail. We've been operating out of Matthews, right off of John Street, and we have a new location that opened then about a year, year and a half ago in Waxall. We look forward to this opportunity to relocate our corporate headquarters as we continue to expand. We have 10 locations currently under construction and anticipate doing at least another 10 sites next year. This would be our new campus to not only distribute all of the materials needed, app locations, chemicals, supplies, et cetera, but also house the corporate overhead, everything from accounting to IT jobs, construction and development jobs, and then just overall admin. Currently, our office is about 30, 35 folks, but as we continue to grow over the next five years, we anticipate employing 75 people out of this location in corporate roles, in addition to folks in our warehouse, who'll do the warehouse and distribution. I'm here for any questions, whether, you know, the commissioners have any or anybody else.
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing regarding this matter? The next matter on the agenda is Item 23-764, Union County Sheriff's Office K-9 Recognition. I want to recognize Lieutenant James May with the Union County Sheriff's Office for this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Merrill, for the introduction. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here. I'm Lieutenant James May. I'm a public information officer for the Union County Sheriff's Office, and I live in Unionville. So I'd like to thank the county management team as well for being here tonight and for, once again, allowing this opportunity. And ultimately, most important, I'd like to thank the sheriff and the executive commander of the sheriff's office for allowing me to be the spokesperson. So, as you can all see, everybody's attention is now off of me and onto the floppy-eared animal behind me. This handsome fellow is Justice. The guy with him is Deputy Brad Belk. So, once again, I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity to introduce and highlight Union County Sheriff's Office Bloodhound Justice. Justice is a five-year-old bloodhound that has served the citizens of Union County faithfully since 2018. Justice received most of his training from Sergeant William Walton. Before his promotion, Sergeant Walton trained Justice and eventually passed him on to the care of Deputy Logan Starnes, and ultimately, finally, to Deputy Brad Belk. Justice and his handlers have been instrumental in multiple missing person investigations and ground searches. Bloodhounds such as Justice are utilizing ground searches due to their superior sense of smell and tracking abilities. Justice's friendliness and approachability have been key aspects of his successful law enforcement career, and he has often been the friendly, long-eared face that residents in crisis reach out to when they are located by our dedicated K-9 team. Sadly, Justice will now enter his well-earned retirement due to some health issues that are affecting his ability to adequately perform his duties. Justice will live with Deputy Brad Belk and his family on their farm here in Union County and travel to various farm-related events in and outside of North Carolina. On behalf of Sheriff Eddie Caffey, we would like to thank Justice for his years of dedicated service to our community, and once again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to highlight him here tonight.
I'm better on this side of the camera.
That was Deputy Sheriff Brad Belk, and he will get to give Justice a permanent home after his retirement, so we are very grateful for all of our Union County Sheriff staff and the handlers of these special K9s. The next item on the agenda is 23-765, Resolution Supporting Operation Green Light for Our Veterans. Commissioner Brian Helms has requested this item be added to the agenda, so I will recognize his comments at this time.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yeah, I felt as though this would be a good opportunity for the county to recognize our veterans that we've got and certainly show them at least a small amount of gratitude. They deserve so much more, but this would certainly be a start to show them our gratitude for all of their service, their sacrifice in defense of our great nation. Obviously, Operation Green Light is something very simple. You know, it's talking about just lighting entranceways with green lights in order to honor them, but it also shows that we certainly see them and certainly respect all that they've done for us. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans, which designates November 6th through November 12th, 2023, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service, and encourages the citizens of Union County and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made those immeasurable sacrifices to preserve the freedom that we enjoy by displaying green lights in the window of their businesses or their residence from November 6th through the 12th, 2023.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So everybody get their green Christmas lights out with honor of veterans. Oh, Michelle, wonderful.
Thank you, Michelle.
The next matter on the agenda is Item 23-706, to recognize Kate Fleming, a Union County pre-treatment manager, as the Marty Groom Pre-Treatment Professional Award recipient. I will now recognize Mr. Josh Brooks, Water and Wastewater Division Interim Director for this item.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair. Thanks for the time this evening, County Commissioners, County Manager Matthews. We always take joy in celebrating our employees for various accomplishments, and it's really tough to follow behind Justice, I'm telling you. Good boy, made us all feel good about ourselves today, so thank you. Anyway, I'll give you a little background on the award in the Illinois District Gate. Also have the second item following this one. If I could do them back-to-back, if it pleases the board, then you can do the pictures afterwards, if you don't mind. So a little bit of background on the award. The award is the Marty Groom Pre-Treatment Professional Award. It's offered by the North Carolina Pre-Treatment Consortium. And Consortium is a nonprofit organization representing over 140 pre-treatment professionals and 120 of the state's 125 active pre-treatment programs. And industrial pre-treatment, if you're not too familiar with it, is designed with the intent to remove unnecessary pollutants out of the wastewater stream, to reduce the impact in the wastewater process. So the Marty Groom Pre-Treatment Professional Award recognizes outstanding effort, achievement, workload, and contribution to the field of the industrial pre-treatment, and it is presented each year at that annual conference, which was recently held in September in Riceville Beach, North Carolina. Kate was awarded this year's Marty Groom Professional Pre-Treatment Award for her continued dedication and involvement within the North Carolina Pre-Treatment Consortium. She has been an active member of this organization for over 12 years, where she played a major part of the conference planning and executive board, as well as recently serving as the NCPC Conference Co-Chair and liaison to the North Carolina Water Quality Association and North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality on various topics including permits, backlogs, communication, water quality standards, headworks analysis, and others. Kate has been in the wastewater industry for over 20 years. She's served in various capacities with other utilities. We've had the pleasure of having her appear for the past four years, serving as the Industrial Pre-Treatment Program Manager, where she played a significant role in industrial pre-treatment permitting, UC Water's fats, oils, and grease program, the development of Union County's current sewer use ordinance, thereby successfully reviving UC Water's pre-treatment program at 12 Mile and Crooked Creek. So we'd like to take a moment to congratulate Kate Fleming, if she'd like to come up. She's going to go. Okay, so the next item is a celebration of the Operations Challenge Team that recently did two different competitions. The one was just done this past week, so it's not a part of the agenda, but I thought I'd add it as part of the background. So each year, the Water Environment Federation Conference is held where industry professionals come to network, talk about new technologies in the wastewater field. This year's conference was held in Chicago, Illinois, on September 30th through October the 4th. As part of this conference, there is a competition called Operations Challenge that introduces wastewater techniques, provides different evolutions and exercises in timed competitions to distribute how those work out. So it's made up of five events. One's a wastewater collection system event where they actually go in, remove a section of pipe, cut it out, go to another section, make a tap, remove it, put it in the repair piece, all under timeframe, while they're also dedicating their time to setting up an automated sampler. Second event is a maintenance event, which simulates the failure of a pump station. The pump station failure also includes safety items such as lockout, tag-out, and safety pulling the pump with crane systems. There's another one's a laboratory event, where they analyze wastewater coming through, have a simulated issue they have to resolve and find solutions to that. Process control, where they go through a wastewater process. Another simulated, concerns are going on, they have to figure out how to resolve those processes. And in the safety event, where they extract a worker from a confined space. After they extract the worker from a confined space safely, they have to go and repair a piece of equipment down in that confined space appropriately. So with all being said, that was quite the mouthful. The Operations Challenge Team earned first place in the collections event and sixth place overall in the Operations Challenge amongst 55 teams around the world at this conference in Chicago. It's quite the feat. They were also received the Distinguished Spirit Award for their collaboration and cooperation in developing the events in Chicago. So while they're still celebrating a success on that, they also went to Raleigh this past week for the North Carolina One Water Conference, which is the state's conference, and took first place in the laboratory event and the collections event, and took second overall in the state. So again, quite a good team. And we do have them here for the most part. This is the bodyguard row right here. So I'd like to recognize, if you stand up and you call Jonathan Jordan, Water Reclamation Facility Superintendent, Hayden Hunter, Utility Mechanic 2, Austin Medlin, Utility Technician 1, Brett Fisher, Crew Leader, Jamie Hargit, Crew Leader and Coach, Chad Green, Industrial Pre-Treatment Coordinator, along with Matt Hargit, Utility Services Supervisor, heading up the event team coordinator. So guys, if you could come forward, we really appreciate it. They've done a great job. Congratulations.
Guys, everyone looking here first?
All right. Down three, one, two, three.
Over here for me?
Okay, Kate, come this way.
Glad to get Lucy's step ladder next time.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. Sure. Thank you.
No one's up here?
Thank you.
Great job.
Okay, the next item is the consideration of the consent agenda. Are there any revision requests to consent? If not, all those in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
No.
Consent?
I just wasn't sure if you were making a motion.
Okay. We are now at the business portion of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is item 23-727.
Sorry, Madam Vice Chair, if I can, if it's appropriate, I would like to add an item to business for this evening, and that item would be regarding the Wesley Woods neighborhood, as well as Winding Creek and Taylor Glen, to direct staff to engage with the respective municipalities. If that's appropriate, I'd like to add that to the business section for discussion this evening.
Yes, we can do that. You want to just go ahead and do that first? Have, make that the first item?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Hammonds.
Okay, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So I asked for this to be added for discussion, because this board has received numerous calls and emails regarding flooding issues, flooding issues that affected the Wesley Woods neighborhood and multiple properties there, as well as potential problems there in Taylor Glen, and also Winding Creek neighborhoods here in Union County. Now, these neighborhoods, well, they're in respective municipalities, so you've got the Village of Wesley Chapel involved there, as well as the Town of Indian Trail. What I would like to do is, I would like to offer a motion, and of course, this will be up for discussion, but I would like to offer a motion that we direct staff officially to engage with the officials at the Village of Wesley Chapel, and also the Town of Indian Trail, and also the Department of, North Carolina Department of Transportation, and any other relevant parties, to facilitate discussion and analysis of the causes and potential engineering solutions for the stormwater issue affecting Wesley Woods, Taylor Glen, and also Winding Creek neighborhoods.
And that was your motion?
That was my motion, yes, ma'am.
Are there any comments from other commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Okay. That brings us to the next item, which was the first item. 23-727, consideration of a Step 2 Economic Development Incentive Grant for SXCW Properties 2 LLC, otherwise known as Project Bear. I will now recognize Chris Platte from Monroe, Union County Economic Development Commission, for any additional comments on this item.
We have no other comments, thank you.
Then I'll make a motion that we award the Step 2 Economic Development Incentive Grant to SXCW Properties 2 LLC in the amount not to exceed $171,000 over a five-year period, and to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item. Are there any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our next matter of business is item 23-735, easement condemnation authority for fiscal year 2021, short waterline extension program, Phase B and C. I want to recognize John Schutak, Engineering Division Director for this item. Okay, we'll go back to that one. Let's do this one first. Okay.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Members of the management team, thank you for your time tonight. Tonight, I'm going to be talking a little bit about our short waterline extension program, specifically Phases B and C of the FY21 projects. Now, just to set the foundation for the discussion, the short line program has been around for a long time. And the overarching goal of the short line program, regardless of what form the program is taken, has always been the same, and that's to extend public water, public infrastructure to serve Union County residents who desire to have public water service. This is funded by Union County Water, basically on an annual allocation. And one of the other things that's been consistent is there's always been interest in the projects. Residents have always been interested in getting the service from Union County, and as such, we generated quite a backlog. FY21 is actually the third year of the backlog projects. And one of the other things that's been consistent, other than, you know, the desire for the service, is there's always something new for us to contend with. And in particular, tonight's discussion is regarding easement acquisition. So tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the two projects, Phases B and C, just give you an overview of that, talk about the project schedule, where we stand there, where we stand with easement acquisition, what our alternatives are moving forward, and then we'll have requested action by the board this evening. And if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me at any time. All right, so to start off with, Phase B, we've got a total of 17 applicants over 11 locations that are part of this project. The total project length is 2.1 miles. You can see the project statistics there on the right of the slide. Our pipe diameters vary in size between 2 and 8 inch. Approximate cost of about $1.4 million, and it's going to take about nine months to construct this. The project areas highlighted in yellow are the ones where we have challenges with easement acquisition. For Phase C, very similar. We've got 21 applicants for Phase C, served over a total of three project areas. The two highlighted in yellow are, again, where we're having challenges with easement acquisition. Overall, Phase C consists of about 2.8 miles of pipe. Again, pipe diameters range between 2 and 8 inches. Estimated project cost of about $1.6 million, and similar construction timeframe of about nine months. Sorry about the trigger finger there. Project schedule, we started design on these, or achieved final design in March of '22. Began permitting in March of '22, that carried through until October of '22. And yes, those years are correct, so we are behind schedule on this, and this is because of easement acquisition. So easement acquisition kind of raised its head, and the history on this, on this program as far as easements, are that applicants have to provide the county an easement if it's needed, and that's for applicants. But as time has gone on, we've run across more and more areas where we have to cross properties that are non-applicant owned. So the question came up, what do we do with that? Because the policy we had in place really didn't address that. So we came back to you in the fall, September of 2022, asking about direction on how we were supposed to move forward with this. And the outcome of that discussion was that, again, applicants would give the easements to Union County, non-applicant property owners, we would compensate them for the easements in accordance with our adopted easement acquisition policy. So knowing that, starting with that, in September of '22, we've moved through the easement acquisition process, which has a multiple, it's a multiple-step project or process, where staff have the property appraised, that offer is then presented to the property owner. We address any questions they have, there's a lot of interaction there. Ultimately, if we're not able to come to a resolution with the property owner at the staff level, then it's referred to our attorneys for negotiation and settlement. Moving to the next step beyond that, if you're talking about, once the, excuse me, once the attorneys have spoken with the property owner, if they are unable to come to an agreed-upon settlement, then our final action would be to exercise the power of eminent domain or condemnation. And that's where we are today, and we have a choice to make there. But as we move forward in time, you can see, once we have direction on what we're to do with easement acquisition here, we can move forward with bidding and contracting, ultimately constructing the project and wrapping these up by about this time next year. So where we stand with easement acquisition, on Phase B, you can see the three areas that we're having some challenges with, and in each of these instances, you'll note the coloring on the slide there. And yellow indicates the properties that we're having challenges with easements. Unfortunately, the applicant is separated from the public infrastructure by one of these yellow-colored properties, so we're having to cross a non-applicant property in order to serve the applicant. The good news is, out of the 23 easements required for all of Phase B, we've acquired 19 of them. So, and again, we've gone through the process with all these property owners, and we are at an impasse with these last four. Similarly, with Phase C, again, the good news is, out of 33 easements required, we've acquired 26 of them. Similar situation with the property depicted in the top image on the right there. Again, the public infrastructure is off to the left, the applicant property is to the right, and it's separated by a non-applicant property. The slide, or the image shown in the lower right there, you can see we're coming at this from two different directions, so it's a little bit different situation. If you're coming from the west or the left-hand side of the image, again, we'd have to cross a non-applicant property to serve some of those applicants. If you're coming at it from the east, there is the ability to execute this project, at least in some part, to serve a few of the applicants, but not all. So that leads us to the question of what do we do? Well, we've got a couple of alternatives, and they really boil down to two very simple choices. And one of them is that the board authorizes condemnation, and we move forward with these projects as-is. The other alternative would be to not authorize condemnation, and we would simply have to remove at least four of these projects, and we would have to modify the fifth, at least in some part, and provide what service that we could without having those easement interests in hand. So that's the basic choice that we have before us tonight. So the requested action here is really dependent on what y'all are considering doing here. So we can either authorize condemnation, we've got the parcel IDs listed there, and I believe we've got the resolutions for you to formally adopt, or you can direct staff to remove those five projects, and we'll have to move forward with refunding fees, retooling the one project as appropriate.
Madam Chair, thank you. And I recognize this is a, oftentimes, a difficult decision for the board to consider condemnation. This program has morphed over the years. It was originally truly a short line program at a few hundred feet, up to 1,000 feet, and it usually didn't run into easement issues. However, the program has grown in that, as you can see, many of these projects take on, you know, miles of pipes. And when you're running into those situations, you will have easement issues that you're going to deal with, and this is not going to go away for our future FY22 and FY23 programs. This project is pretty far along. We've designed it, we've actually bid and authorized Phase A, and we're waiting to bid and authorize B and C, because we certainly can't do that until we have easements. It would be my recommendation that the board consider doing condemnation for Phases B and C. However, I would recommend that for future FY22 and FY23, those programs are not as far down, that the board consider not authorizing condemnation. And we explain to those applicants that they're going to have to take a more active role in trying to secure that, to have those discussions with their neighbors, in an effort for us not to put this additional cost and burden on the ratepayers. My recommendation is really based on the fact, we've gone a long way on this particular project. We had no expectations or left no expectations with those property owners and those applicants that condemnation was even considered. So I think this is a, it's not an optimal, it is the way that we would move forward with this particular project, but I would hope that the board would consider that condemnation would not be used for FY22 and FY23. That would be my recommendation at this time.
Does anyone have any questions or need clarification?
John, question. So what we're talking about here is we're talking about utility easements, so we're not talking about taking people's homes, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. As far as if the board decided not to use condemnation power tonight, we could salvage at least some of this project, is that what I'm understanding?
So the only project, so Phase B would be reduced, these three areas would be removed. Keep in mind, there's 11 total project areas in Phase B, so these three would have to be removed. There's simply no way for us to move forward with them. Phase C, we would have to remove the segment shown on Lawyer's Road, it's the upper right there, simply because we can't get from the public infrastructure to the applicant, very similar to Phase B. The image that's shown for Unionville Brief, clamps long roads, there is the ability to modify that project, but you would not be able to serve all of the applicants. It would be reduced.
Okay, thank you, John.
Does that answer your question, sir?
It does. Thank you.
So, Board, we have an action requested. We can either move forward, as the county manager has recommended, with condemnation for FY21, since design and going out to bid has already taken place. But not, you know, entertain condemnation in the future for FY22 or '23. But this one has been going on, or has been dragging out for quite some time. Any discussion?
I've got some comments. So as I was looking over this item, this is a very difficult decision. decision that this board has got to make. I, I don't think that anybody that sits up here ever wants to use the power of condemnation. That's something that's given to this board, the board as a whole, by general statute here in our state. But I don't think that anyone up here ever wants to do that. Because in doing so, you are, in my opinion, stepping on the rights of the property owners. Now, when I looked at this too, I, I looked at the number of applicants that we've got, and, and I'll be clear with everybody, I'm a huge proponent of the short line water extension. Because I've looked at this as, as a, a basic need that the county should be able to provide to every resident within our borders. Every resident within our borders should have access to clean drinking water. But I looked at the numbers, and I looked at 56 easements, and I looked at 38 applicants. And then I looked at the easements that are left to been, to be acquired. So Phase B, we have four left there. And then at Phase C, we have seven. So that's 11 easements that stand in the way of 38 applicants. And in order to service those applicants, we have to maintain, or we have to acquire 56 easements. That's a lot of easements. That is a lot of easements. And to staff's credit, acquiring the number that you guys have acquired to this point is pretty impressive. John, do you happen to know, maybe off the top of your head, with the total number of easements remaining, do you, do you have any bead on how much acreage that would be?
For, I'm, I'm not sure for...
I, I think we provided that information earlier. I believe for Phase B, it was .21 acres for the permanent easements, and .20 acres for the temporary easement. And then for Phase C, I believe it was .89 acres for the permanent easement, and for temporary was .94. So add that all together, not a significant amount of land area, obviously, but certainly area you would have to condemn.
Yeah. And I, I fully understand where staff is coming from with the recommendation to proceed with condemnation. This one tugs at my heart, because I really want that water. I don't know that I can vote for the power of condemnation, though, for these properties. 11 properties, that's a lot. That's a lot to condemn.
But I, I'm also hearing that 45 properties are waiting for clean water. So 19 in Phase B were acquired, correct? And then 20, and then 26 were acquired in Phase C. So 11 properties are preventing clean water for 45 properties. 19 and 26.
Yes.
So that tugs at my heart, too, that 45 homes have been waiting since 2021 for clean water. And we've had people coming before us in comments, you know, asking, you know, when are we going to do this? So, you know, that's, that's tough.
Is it still possible more easements will be taken up? I mean, is it still possible you'll have some more that are acquired? I'm sorry.
To think the process that we expect is, and Jason can speak to this, once you notify the property owners that you intend to go through condemnation, that often prompts them to come to the table and negotiate, and hopefully resolve that issue. Not always. But you do, you will have some that will say, no, I'm, I'm going to go to court, and I'm going to settle this in court. Generally, that number is lower than the total that you have, but there's no way for us to tell you, is it 10% or is it 50% of them? But typically, we will have some negotiation, and we will settle a number of those.
So those numbers may go up as far as easement?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Yes, Meryl?
Yes.
Got a question. Phase C, eight acres is what you said?
A .8. Yes, sir, I'm sorry, .8.
Now, this, this, we just went through this process with the Yadkin coming in.
Yes, sir.
But we had to condemn some property. We didn't take the property from them, we just, the right of way. Is that correct?
So the, the, it's an easement interest, it's not a fee simple acquisition. So title remains in the property owner's name, and we are simply acquiring the right to install and maintain that public infrastructure within those defined limits of the easement.
So we're not really taking the property? We're, we're taking the right to, I know it's a fine line.
It, it is. I'm, I'm looking at our, our county attorney, who seems to be getting a little bit sweaty on the brow.
No, I'm, I'm nodding. John is getting it essentially correct. And Mr. Helms, I think you are correctly stating it. We would be taking the right to place the infrastructure on folks' property, not taking their property away from them as you would in fee simple.
I just want to clear, sorry, my name's Lillian Young, I run the short water line program, mostly. Congratulations, Commissioner Raul. I just want to clear something up about the numbers, too. You mentioned two numbers, a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement. Those don't get added together, they pretty much overlap. It's the same, really the same area. The temporary construction easement is just when we're doing construction, so we can be out there doing the construction. Sometimes it's a little bigger, so we can have like our pipe on the side of the road. And then afterwards, we have the permanent easement, then we can come back and maintain the water line. So I just wanted to be clear about those two numbers. You're not, so when he said like .2 and .2, you're not adding those together, they're really the same area. So.
Yeah, one goes away. That's, it just goes away after construction's completed.
Question for, I'm sorry.
One of the things, and I, again, this is, obviously, it's a, you know, tough decision for the board. We have invested a significant amount in this particular project, from design, permitting, and also easement acquisition. I do want to make sure the board realizes that, whatever your decision is, we already have these easements that we purchased. We're not going to go back and give the easements back. We're going to continue to have those easements that we've purchased. We just don't have all the easements that we need. So just be aware that, that we've made an investment in this particular project. That's one of the reasons why I was recommending that you consider condemnation, because of the investments that we've made in that.
So going back to the 45 that you've already acquired, would that be 45 that we have already purchased?
Whatever the number is, we've already acquired those easements.
So some of those we haven't purchased, and I don't know the number off the top of my head. Some of them were just given to us willingly by, this is before we changed the policy last fall. They were given to us willingly by residents. Some of them are interested in enjoying in the water themselves, some of them just want to help their neighbors out. So they, they gave us the easement, you know, willingly. And then we had a handful left that, you know, weren't willing without being compensated, and that's when we went back and looked at changing the policy, and we had that discussion last September, as John mentioned.
Thank you.
So it's, it's quite a long and storied history.
So a question for Mr. Matthews, John. If the board votes to use the power, power of condemnation on these easements tonight, can you clarify if there's any kind of impact to potential short line water projects for FY 22 or 23?
You're talking about for the decision?
I'm thinking more along the lines of financial impact.
Okay. Yeah. So obviously, we're not going to, we, there will be an additional cost that we'll have to pay. What that amount is, we can't tell you. Some of it would depend on whether or not we can negotiate and get those easements without going to court. The other part will depend on, if we have to go to court, what do we pay for court fees, what are our attorney's fees, and then ultimately, what is the amount? So it will be more. That, those funds will have to come out of the short line program. Likely, will have to come out of some other budget within short line, which could be 22 or 23. Just be aware, when we originally designed this program, it was not contemplated we would have to fund condemnation or easement acquisition. So those dollars were not necessarily built into the program. It doesn't mean we won't be able to accommodate it, we just won't know until we get to the end.
Thank you. And do we have, I know this is probably early in the process for 22 and 23, do we have any idea about how that might be shaping up with the easement acquisition? Not, not at this point.
Not at this point. 22, they've just started with preliminary surveying work. So we will have some idea, probably in the next few months, I would say, on at least possible easement, as far as those go. 23, we will, we'd have no idea at this point.
Thank you, sir.
So if I may, I'd like to take one second. Commissioner Helms, you raised a prior project, the Yadkin. And Commissioner Raul, you asked a question related to how we were going to move forward with these, with these easements, whether condemnation meant trial in court or settlement, if, if I understood that correctly. For reference, the Yadkin program had 321 property interests, so a pretty good sized sample set. Of those, and across both Stanley and Union County, of those properties, we actually had to file paperwork with the clerk of court for 53. So we filed 53 condemnations. To date, we have settled 39 of those without going to court. So we have 13, 14 easement interests remaining on that project, so less than 5% of the total. So just information for you, wanted to make sure you had that.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing condemnation to acquire certain property or interest in property for a temporary construction easement and permanent utility easement for the FY 2021 Short Water Line Extension Program Phases B and C.
Should I make a friendly amendment to, I'm going to offer a friendly amendment that taking the, the manager's recommendation to move forward to authorize condemnation so that we can honor the money that we've already invested as a county. But I, I want to piggyback on what he's already said, that, that we will not consider this for FY 22 or 23. Would you accept that?
I mean, that's fine. You know, the motion only involves fiscal year 2021. But just speaking generally, I think we need to perhaps revisit and look more closely at how we do this in subsequent fiscal year programs. So I, I, I agree with the spirit of that, yes.
Okay. Are there any questions about the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, we do need to backtrack a little bit, and I apologize for that. Our next item is 23-755, Union County Land Preservation and Easement Program. I'd like to recognize Andrew Balkum, the Cooperative Extension Director for this item.
Okay. Thank you Vice Chairman Merrill, Commissioners, Manager Matthews, for allowing us to come talk to you tonight about the Union County Land Preservation and Easement Program. This program's discussion started after an AG legislative meeting with local, state, and federal elected officials, where extension noted Union County was 13th in the nation in open space loss. Following that meeting, we had multiple conversations with multiple members of the community regarding open space land loss. So we, we gathered a community stakeholders group with farmers, developers, landowners, and local government officials to have a series of discussions. These meetings gave the framework for the Union County Land Preservation Easement Program. With that, I would like to recognize Alan Balkum, Chairman of the Soil and Water Board, to present the Farmland Preservation Easement Program. And also would like to recognize Brad Hargit with the Ag Advisory Board, and we also have members here from both boards.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm not Andrew, I'm Alan. Just, just don't want any confusion there. It, it's my honor, privilege to present to you this preservation and conservation easement package, the program that we're, we're presenting to you this evening. One of the impetus, impetus of our presentation is the fact, as you see on, on your screens there, North Carolina ranks second in the United States in open space and land loss annually, second in the nation. But when we bring it home, in Union County, we're 13th in the nation. 13th in the nation, folks. That's serious. This is a program that, quite honestly, should be, should have been started years ago. But that era's spent. We can't start any sooner than today. So we want to bring this forward to you as we, I can go backwards or forwards. In Union County, well, let me go back just a moment. If you see there, under the present business as usual, the way it's going now, from 2016 to 2040, it's projected that we'll lose 51,000 acres. If there's sprawl, that number goes to 71,000. But just using the 51,000, there's 186,000 acres of farmland in Union County. That 51,000 becomes 28%. But as we go to this slide, we see at the bottom that in the past, in '23 and the past three years prior to that, we've lost an average of over 3,000 acres per year to development. And if we take this 3,000 acres at this rate, and we project it forward to 2040, we're going to be at about 75,000 acre loss. Then we're not just at 28%, we're at an astronomical 40-plus percent loss of farmland and open space. We all know by lots of surveys and lots of comments that people make, that the open space, the agrarian culture, the climate that we have in this county is one of the great things that brings not only industry, but people to the county. We can't afford to lose it. And with that, Union County ranks, just so, to put it on record, Union County ranks third in the, in the state in agricultural production. I know y'all have heard this before, but it, I want to say it again, third in the state. And we're sitting here under the shadows of Mecklenburg County. And that's quite a feat. It's quite a, a feat in that we've got people that are committed to agriculture, to open space, and it doesn't cost the county anything. So as we go forward, this action, as, as Alan has, has said, originated from meetings with lots of stakeholders. There's lots of fingerprints on this, this proposal that we're making to you. Not only was it from individual stakeholders, but... but we had prepared a resolution that we presented to the Union Soil and Water Conservation District, and it got unanimous approval. The same resolution was presented to the Ag Advisory Board, and again, unanimous unanimous support, excuse me. The goals are preservation of rural character, preservation of agricultural land in open space in Union County, preservation of agricultural land for future generations, and promote the environmental conservation and water quality, air, soil, and water. How does it work? We take the rollback from the present use value, the three-year rollback, and that's a rollback that's coming from, where land is coming out of Ag use valuation. We take those values and we take and repurpose those monies into permanent conservation easements. So it's coming from agriculture, it's going to agriculture. Has zero effect on your budget because these monies are non-line item budget. They've, over the past three years, they've varied, and they will continue to vary. But this past year, in fiscal year 23, $969,000. What are we asking for? That you approve staff to apply for a Preservation Trust Fund Grant for the Conservation Easement Development Program. We ask that you approve the Union County Soil and Water Conservation District to purchase and hold the Conservation Easements for land preservation in the county. And then to adopt your Budget Amendment Number 14, appropriating the county's general fund to use unassigned fund balance in the amount of $969,000 to be used for the purchase of Conservation Easements and the associated transactional costs. Again, zero impact to your budget using unassigned funds. And it's using funds that's coming from Agriculture Deforestation Program and put it into Conservation Easements. And these easements go into perpetuity. And as it's been explained to me, perpetuity is a long time. We're asking for an adoption of these items. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I make one clarification? So the request is obviously that this program is really more of an ongoing program. They are asking for the FY 23 dollars to be moved over from unassigned fund balance. I do want to make clear that in future years, that if, for some reason, we do not have a fund balance, we have not generated a surplus, that we would not fund the program. Because the only way we are funding the program is from surplus dollars, from unassigned fund balance. I'm not saying that will ever happen, but I don't want us to get into a situation where we do have a negative year, and then we have to dip into reserves to fund this program. That's not what this is intended. It's intended to use the rollback funds as a portion of our unassigned fund balance, which is a surplus of dollars that we receive. So each year, when we have our audit done, we'll know what those amounts are. We'll come to the board, we'll let you know what those are. And the intention is that will be programmed for the next fiscal year.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
If I may, first of all, thank you, Mr. Balkum, for the presentation. You know, I believe that agriculture still has a very big place in Union County. My roots came from agriculture. Mr. Balkum, I know that your roots came from agriculture as well. And so I am of utmost concern with the diminishing farmland that we have in Union County. And I certainly appreciate, you know, you guys bringing this to us. Tonight, I'm willing to make the motion that we approve staff to apply for a North Carolina Farmland Preservation Trust Fund Grant Application for a Conservative Easement Development Grant. Also, that we approve Union County Soil and Water Conservation District to purchase and hold Conservation Easements for land preservation in Union County. And then third, to adopt a Budget Amendment Number 14, appropriating the county's general fund, unassigned fund balance in the amount of $969,006 to be used for the purchase of Conservation Easements and associated transaction costs.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say I think it's a noble effort. It's the right kind of effort to be engaged in in terms of protecting our green spaces, our farmland, pursuing Conservation Easements. I think all that's very laudable. However, I think that I'd like to spend more time on examining possible solutions. I notice in the agenda item that the Union County Soil and Water Conservation District would be the one entrusted with basically managing this. And I'd just like to make sure that, you know, we do our due diligence and just examine, you know, the multiplicity of ways that this might be accomplished. You know, there are a number of not-for-profit entities out there that basically are in the business of land preservation, pursuing Conservation Easements. And some of these entities raise a lot of money and have been pretty successful in terms of obtaining these Conservation Easements and protecting our green spaces. So I think that's worth pursuing. You know, in terms of looking at unassigned fund balance, I'm not prepared to act on that today because frankly, we've relied on using our unassigned fund balance as a county. You know, this isn't just money that accumulates and that we don't use. We use it. And indeed, we used it this past fiscal year in preparing for the current one. And we've got a lot of pressing needs in this county, among our first responders and in terms of and I know some of these are ongoing expenses, but they're also expenses that, you know, they're monies that we need to kind of get a jumpstart on some of the capital projects we desperately need to start getting serious about in terms of preparing for. So again, I embrace the concept. I think we ought to pursue it. We ought to look at broadly at partners, both private and public, to make it happen. But I'm not in a position today to where I feel like I can go ahead and appropriate, you know, future unaside fund balance for this sort of thing. Because we've got needs, other needs. I mean, and I don't just mean ancillary needs. I mean core needs, fundamental needs. You know, core services that government is in the business of, local government is in the business of providing. So I would respectfully ask that we, you know, kind of postpone this, perhaps defer it. But I, again, think it's a very laudable goal, a noble effort. And I'd like to, you know, again, think more broadly and converse more broadly about, you know, how we do this with maybe a wider range of partners.
May I?
Yes.
Number one, and I appreciate your remarks on it, Commissioner Williams. I happen to sit on the Board of Directors of Catawba Land Conservancy. And it is an entity that is in the that its due diligence is to procure land for the easements and own land for the conservation element. The challenge we have, and it doesn't matter what entity it goes through, one of the real challenges is that when a person that owns the land decides that they need to convert to money, all these other entities, the Farmland Trust, Catawba Land Conservancy, all of these, it'll take a minimum of two to three years, up to five to six years to get those funds generated. And the people, in lots of cases, this is their fund balance that they have. This is their savings that they have. And they can't afford, when they make that decision to convert, they're not willing, or maybe in some cases, cannot wait to convert. What this does is give the county the opportunity to take the funds and procure the properties. Now, with this, and so I speak to the Soil and Water Conservation District holding the easements, this is how it's done in other counties. It is given, the Soil and Water Conservation is given the right to do this. And this allows the Soil and Water Conservation District, through how the program is set up, to go ahead and make a move. And then the grants will be applied for to generate money back into the program so it can do more. In other words, this doesn't preclude seeking grant money from other sources at all. In fact, it enables it to move the whole process forward. And so this is allowing money that's coming from the agricultural program and putting it back into conservation and preservation that enables it to occur. And quite honestly, it is not occurring presently at a rate that, well, when you see what's happening, that it's not happening. Did that help you in any?
Some, and again, you know, I think this is the sort of thing that, you know, we should be looking at. But who is the "we"? I mean, it's not necessarily, I think, it doesn't necessarily have to fall on Union County government. It could be a broader spectrum of partners. And I'm just looking here at nearly a million dollars in unassigned fund balance. I mean, the county absolutely relies on, you know, these unassigned fund balances from year to year in helping us, you know, provide services. And that's not insignificant. So I'm not saying no to this. I'm glad this is in front of me. I would just personally like more time, you know, to investigate this more, perhaps to talk among colleagues and, you know, see how we can do this in a way that, you know, addresses some of those concerns for me.
Other thing I would say is that Mecklenburg County, in its infinite wisdom, three months ago, hired a Farmland Preservation Director. And I'm guessing that all of us probably have an understanding of about how much farmland is left in Mecklenburg County. What we don't want is for Union County to be in that same situation. And it can easily happen, easily.
Alan, we had a conversation. And at least I understood that this $969,000 came from, like, I just bought some land to build a house, and it was in the farm program.
Yes, sir.
I had to pay the three years back taxes. And I sold a farm too, down in South Carolina, and they asked for the same thing. Is that $969,000 our overall fund balance? Or is it just the funds from taking property out of the farm program?
That would, that's just the funds from the PUV program. It is not the total fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is significantly higher than that.
So this is from that land, that transfer of land from the farm program?
Only those amounts that come from that clawback.
Yep, they call it the rollback, essentially. Those three years that you're talking about, that's what generated that $969,000. Yes, sir.
So we're not really taking our fund balance?
Oh, no.
You're asking for the funds that came from people selling the farmland?
So it actually is our fund balance. I want to make that clear. At the end of the day, when we do our audit, any funds that come from the rollback program are also added to our total fund balance. And as Commissioner Williams indicated, we often use those dollars for capital projects, for other needs, or other one-time dollars, EMS, whatever. And so we do use those funds for a number of things. So it is part of our fund balance. But it is generated from the taxes that are paid because those properties came out of the farm program.
So the same funds we were talking about?
Yes, sir.
I have one question too. So in 2021, the rollback was roughly $730,000.
Yes, ma'am.
Then the following year, it was roughly $748,000. Then in 2023, it was $969,000.
Yes, ma'am.
So they're not asking for year over year over year. They're only asking for 2023.
Obviously, I think that the goal is for this to be an ongoing program. So in 2024, they would ask that you consider that in 2024. But right now, the request is
My question was, they're not asking for '21 plus '22
That's correct.
plus '23. They're only asking for this past year.
That's correct.
So the funds from '21 are going to remain in fund balance. '22 is, I mean, so that's almost $2 million right there they're not even asking for. So to get started, they're only asking for '23.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Yes, ma'am.
And will it be a year-by-year request?
That's what we would anticipate, yes, sir. Because we're not going to know what the number is until we do our audit. And so then we would come back to the board and say, this is what it is. Does the board wish to continue the program? Obviously, their intent is for this to continue.
I mean, so it's been as low as $730,000. It's been as high as $969,000. But they're not asking for three years' worth to get started. They're only asking for one year worth to get started. Any other questions or comments, clarifications that are needed?
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
So I think that this, and I'd like to maintain the motion tonight, with all due respect to Commissioner Williams. I would like to go ahead and vote on it. But I think that what we're really voting on here is a commitment to agriculture in Union County. And I think that we're voting on that commitment and how strong we feel about the agriculture here in Union County. You know, Mr. Balkum, you made a comment that we're standing in the shadows of Mecklenburg. And I understand where you're coming from. Being from Union County, I feel like we're more like the shining beacon. And so one of the things that separates us from Mecklenburg is our commitment to agriculture. And I would like to maintain the vote this evening. Thank you.
I will be supporting the vote also because we have made significant investments in our school system with, at the elementary, middle, and high school level with the AgTech program. Wingate University has already started their bachelor's program in AgTech. And we are looking forward to the barn project. So this is Union County. So for those reasons, I will be supporting the motion. If there are no other comments or questions, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
One, motion passes.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners.
And I personally just want to say thank you very much to the Soil and Water and the Agriculture Advisory Board. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. I will pass it down for managers' comments.
I have no comments, thank you, ma'am.
Commissioners' comments? I'll start with Commissioner Richard Helms.
Yes, I'd like to remind everyone, this Saturday, Warriors and Werbers is going to be putting on quite a show to honor veterans. We will have a ceremony. We will have a ceremony where we will recognize the junior ROTC from each school, starting at about 11 o'clock, and we'll recognize the outstanding cadets from each school. I highly encourage, it's worthwhile, they're going to do Tar-Tar again, which is going to sound like somebody's blowing up this side of the county because their power techniques, the show is, is quite good. But I hope to see you there, you'll see a lot of your fellow veterans, and thank you.
Commissioner David Williams.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, I'd just like to say a couple of things. One, Commissioner Rau, welcome, welcome, glad to have you here, glad we're back to full strength. Also, I just wanted to thank all the citizens who spoke during informal comments, specifically Kimberly Morrison Hansley, Brittany Bolden, let's see, Archie Hansley, and Edwin Elam, thank you.
Commissioner Brian Helms.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, I too will congratulate Commissioner Rau. You know, we, we no doubt have some tough decisions to make from this board, and, and I pray that God give this board, as well as Commissioner Rau, the wisdom and the fortitude to make those decisions, and, and make those decisions correctly for the best interest of all of our residents. Also want to take a minute and congratulate Justice, who was here with us briefly this, this evening, as, as well as Deputy Belk, thank you both for your service to our county. I will be at the Warbirds event with Commissioner Helms as well on Saturday, and I'm pleased to do so. I, a lot of people don't know this, but I'm a former cadet, Air Force JROTC cadet, my unit was NC-955. So the JROTC program is very near and dear to my heart, I even met my wife there, so it took her 15 years to go out on a date with me, but, but it finally happened. So I've got great respect for our young cadets, as well as our ROTC programs throughout the county. Thank you to my fellow Commissioners for supporting the resolution, the resolution in support of Project Greenlight. You know, again, I, I won't rehash everything I said, but I think that, you know, this is at least a small token of appreciation for our veterans. Thank you as well for the item to, to engage Wesley Chapel, to direct staff to engage Wesley Chapel, and thank you for supporting those folks. I do want to take a minute and address some of the comments that, that we received this evening, specifically, specifically from Mr. Elam. You know, one of the things that Mr. Elam had said was that the event in Millbridge was put on by the Red Wall. The event in Millbridge was a campaigning event for a slate of candidates in Waxall. There was no Red Wall candidate that was even present at that meeting the other day. So I wanted to clarify that. I also wanted to clarify too, and say that, you know, it's my understanding that this was a private event that was held at a UCS facility. And just like private events anywhere else, this was a facility that was rented by a certain person, and when they engage monetarily and they make a contract to rent a property, whether it's county-owned, or if it's owned by UCS, well, they have legal right to ask those that are not invited to leave. Now, with all due respect, Mr. Elam, you know, you may have a point, and that's something that we can certainly look into, but I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that, that when you rent a facility, you have a legal right to ask those that are not invited to leave that event. So with that, that's all of my comments, I appreciate it, thank you staff for staying late, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
I do not have any comments tonight, other than congratulating JR Rau for joining the Commission, welcome, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and I would like to say it's a great honor to serve the citizens of Union County, I've, I've been able to do that for a number of years, and I don't take that lightly, and it's also an honor for me to serve with these four members, and I want to thank all of the Union County employees, I mean, we have a great staff here, sometimes I think we forget those people, they just kind of work in the background, you know, kind of behind the scenes, but it couldn't be done without them, and I want them to know I really, really appreciate it.
Okay.
And that's it.
And with that, thank you very much, I would like to make the motion to adjourn. No? Oh.
Not yet.
We have to go back to closed session?
Yes, closed session motion.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. For the public, this is the end of our public business for the evening. I move that the board go back into closed session for the following purposes, pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A1, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to General Statute 153-98, pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3, to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.